We're going to call the September 11th, 2018 Board of Ed Meeting to order. I'd like to start for just one moment and just take a moment to remember that it's 9/11 and we don't want to ever forget and think of the families that lost people in 9/11 in New York and the peoples that we all care about and keep them in our prayers and thoughts. And now I can move on to public audience. We're happy to have you all here. Anyone have anything they want to share?
We just wanted to say that...
We're happy to have you. It's always more fun when people are visiting us. Moving on to Board and Administrative Communications. Tom, our student representative is not here tonight, but...
I'm not masquerading as this.
We've come to rely on them for a lot of information.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Jennifer? Lydia?
At the beginning of the new school year, crack and cab are in full swing also this week, so more to come of what's going on on that level.
Thank you.
All set. Thanks.
Just welcome back. Hope everybody had a good summer.
Excellent.
Two pieces of information. Tomorrow, the Bureau Chief for Special Education, Brian Klimkowitz, will be welcoming all of the directors across the state of Connecticut back for our back-to-school meeting. And he also invited Colleen Thompson, Elena Haley, now McNamara, Christina Norrell, Charlotte DeLeo, and members of our United Sound Group to come and do another rendition of Be The Change and to set the year off right with our directors. And I thought that was just great that they were asked to do that cameo. So I'm very excited and proud of that. And then the second is tomorrow will be the Community for Care's first program of the new school year, and it will be on mindfulness, strategies to use from teenage into adulthood. And we have some members of the Simsbury High School community that will be on a panel discussion along with some community members to talk about those strategies. So come one, come all. It's tomorrow night, 6:30 PM at the Simsbury Public Library Program Room.
That's it. Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan?
So my report out tonight is on my school safety front, as I frequently do, and I am pleased tonight to be able to share with the Board a resource that I put at your places, which is really taking our comprehensive school safety plan, which is the school safety teams, the principals, the lead secretaries, the head custodians, who are very familiar with the contents of that plan. But we've been working to get it into the hands of more people. So what you have is an emergency response guide that works in a flip book format, so that what you can see is kind of a tabbed situation of if you have to call a lockdown, if you need an emergency number of some kind. You simply flip the book and the information you need for what emergency you might be facing is right there in the hands of all teachers. And so as we've started a new school year, this book has gone into each classroom and office of the Simsbury Public Schools, so that all staff members have access to the key emergency procedures that they... So the example that I've used as we orient people to this is you'll remember last May when a really scary tornado warning came through, the notion that if people had had an ability to say, "Flip to the page" on a tornado warning, this is the best quick actions that you can take. So we've been working toward this, really proud, and it was received really well by our faculty. But by investing in that resource, what I would also point out is that along with that, what happens is all the information that is part of the flip book can also be downloaded onto an app on your phone. So the same information can... You can have it in this format in every classroom, but let's say you get evacuated and you didn't take your flip book with you, you've got the emergency procedures right on your phone. So really important step forward and a good way to...
Who did you work on this with?
It's a company out of Kansas that we had been tipped onto, and Cindy Freelinger did much of the work with them, back and forth to organize this, take the contents...
But it's our information.
It is our information.
And it comes from your six 20-inch binder.
Exactly. And then it's condensed down into a digestible format for staff.
Chris, if you want to see if anyone wants to look at it. But this is really very, very impressive.
I'm going to talk about the hooks.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
It's on a hook in every class, so it's very visible. And it also has the, if you evacuate, that you can give a quick signal that either your group of kids is all clear or that your group of kids needs help.
It's really... It's awesome. What a great resource.
So we continue to work on the school safety front.
Thank you very much.
So I have a couple of things. We're always proud when one of our educators is awarded some kind of recognition. And Angela Griffin, our Director of Music and Performing Arts, was awarded the William A. Yandau Educator Award from the Bushnell Center. And she received that because of her proven leadership with students, parents, and colleagues and community members, her contributions to curriculum, and the ability to display exceptional talent and her dedication as an educator. So she was brought to a dinner in June and received this award. So really proud that Angela Griffin was awarded this recognition.
Wonderful.
On Monday, September 17th, is Constitution Day. It's a day that we, throughout our Social Studies Program, teachers will help kids recognize the development of the Constitution, and that will happen on Monday throughout the district. And then on October 10th, it's our PSAT School Day for 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. And because of our board, you support that opportunity for students, and that will take place on that day for students at the high school.
What was that date, Erin?
October 10th.
October 10th, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Burke?
Just one item to update the Board on. The Public Building Committee, at its meeting last week, made a final decision on a construction manager at Risk Firm for the Henry James Phase III Project. Our new principal, Scott Baker, had a chance to be at the interview process that happened about a week or two prior to that with us, which was very helpful. And so now we actually have a meeting on Friday to try to finalize the scope of work and get the contract ready to go with them.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything?
No, I would just say, as a few people mentioned, it's exciting to be back. It's good to see everybody, and I know we enjoy this report, the first kickoff report of the year, our school opening report, to catch people up on the work that was done over the summer and kind of identify some of the priorities that we'll be focusing on throughout the year. So I know once we get through our motions, that's really the crux of what we'll be talking about tonight.
Yep. Welcome back to school. I want to say that our convocation that we had before school started was very well received. I had a lot of different people that I saw over the weekend who were very thankful for the inspiring words that we heard from our superintendent. And we had our Teacher of the Year speak, which was very encouraging and enthusiastic and lovely. And then we had another singing group that came and sang, which was a great way to end the ceremony. And Colleen Thompson brought another group of her singers, and it really was a great way to kick off the year. But I heard a lot of positive feedback on that. So thank you all for all you do, and we have work to do as we go forward. So we have a lot of minutes that we need to address because we have a lot of meetings at the end of the year before summer. And the first one, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 26th executive session. If you can take a look and let me know if there are any questions or comments.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Minutes of the regular meeting of June 26th.
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the minutes of July 5th, special meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Thank you very much. And now August 17th, our special meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Thank you very much.
I'll abstain. Excuse me, I was not there. I'll abstain.
Did you move the minutes?
I will retract moving of the minutes because I will abstain.
Oh, she gets to move. Okay. All right. Now, we're back to our friend, Mr. Sullivan, and his personnel.
Yeah, so we're going to catch up on a few motions since the last meeting in June that need to happen. And then I'm going to bring you through a very quick PowerPoint of our new hires that will take care of that part of the exhibit that you don't need to vote for, but you do need to vote on these first. And the first is the clause in the teacher's contract that allows people to give us three years' notice before their retirements. And we have two stalwart Simsbury High School educators, Susan Giswoldy from the Social Studies Department, currently 30 years at Simsbury High School, and many in Granby before she came. She'll be over 40 years by the time her retirement date in 2021 comes up. But we're hanging on to Sue for three more years, as well as Ellen Carrington, who, a special education teacher at Simsbury High School, who currently is at 28 years of service. So these are really key folks in the Simsbury Public Schools, looking at the threshold toward retirement. And the motion is there. If somebody could read that.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Susan Giswoldy and Ellen Carrington, effective June 30th, 2021.
Anyone have anything they want to say? I'd like to thank them for their extended... And thank them for staying on for another three years and figure out who to replace them with. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One, retirement to catch up to from the summer. Another, really special Simsbury educator, Rich Keegan, was a physical education teacher at Simsbury High School for many years while I was principal. Over the last few years, he's gone to Squadron Line School. Rich has been instrumental in the adventure challenge curriculum that we've brought into the school system. All those rock climbing walls that you see throughout the schools are in some way linked back to Rich making those things happen. And Rich is taking his retirement, but continuing to work because he got a part-time job with one of those adventure education companies, that he's going to continue that work. And he probably will be doing professional development for our Simsbury teachers at some point in his new role. But he is officially taking his teacher's retirement, and the motion is there.
I propose that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Rich Keegan, Richard Keegan, effective June 30th, 2018, with our thanks.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
And our congratulations to Rich because he calls it a bucket list job that he just took. So he's really happy about it. And three resignations, non-retiring, but resignations from the school district. Michael Katniss has been a chemistry teacher at Simsbury High School for the last five years. He's pursuing opportunities outside of education. And then two social studies teachers, one who's only been with us a year, Megan McGrath, a part-time social studies teacher at Simsbury High School. It was a part-time job, and she accepted a full-time job up in Massachusetts. She accepted that before Brett Betty resigned his job. But in both of these cases, they are moving... Both of them are moving to Massachusetts for personal reasons. So they're quite happy about it. We're not. And we need the motions to accept their resignations.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Michael Katniss and Megan McGrath, effective July 31st, 2018, and Brent Betty, effective August 11th, 2018, with our thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the last motion needed is a child rearing leave of absence. Raquel Martinez is a Spanish and French teacher at Simsbury High School who had her second child late in the summer. She will finish her maternity leave in October, mid-October, and is requesting child rearing leave for the remainder of the year with a guarantee to have a job when she returns at the start of the 2019 school year. So that motion is on your exhibit.
Move that the Board of Education approve the request for non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Raquel Martinez, effective October 15, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Thank you very much. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Question about these, please. That's quite a list of people leaving the system. I don't know if that's typical or not at this time of year, but it seems like a lot of people... Are all these people going to be replaced or not?
All of these people... Let me check that. Yes, all of these people were replaced.
Are you looking at the ones we just went through or the ones that are coming?
Oh, the ones that we just went through.
The ones we just went through were all replaced.
That's pretty typical, though.
Yeah. If it's a summer hire, typically we don't...
It's a small number, actually.
Is it?
Yeah.
So the rest of the exhibit is just to highlight for you who are new hires that we've welcomed into the Simsbury Public Schools. We started the hiring process in March. I think I signed to the first one of these teachers, and I signed the last one the day after school started. So we succeeded in filling all of our certified vacancies. What I wanted to do is just run very quickly through the PowerPoint that we use at Convocation to show who those new teachers are. We start at Simsbury High School, where we hired seven new teachers. Lena Askazubi was actually a student teacher with us two years ago, went to Avon for a year, and we reeled her back in. So we're excited to welcome Lena to our World Language Department. We did a search for a new English Department Supervisor after, you'll remember, Nilda Irazari accepted an administrative job last year. We were really pleased to find Emily Drago, who was an experienced English Department Supervisor at a smaller school, Northwestern Region 7. So terrific hire, terrific process there. Meredith Girardi in the school counselor's office was another person who interned for a full year with us. So this is... She learned the ropes from us, and she's stepping into a job as her first counseling job. Lynn Lipkin, a French teacher for... This is actually filling that leave that we just voted on for Raquel Martinez. So Lynn really experienced at not only the high school level, but the college level, and is coming to us most recently from Cromwell. Mike McCain is filling that chemistry vacancy we just voted upon. He had a one-year job in Killingley High School. He had wonderful recommendations. Killingley was trying to help him find a job, and they sent him our way, and it was a perfect match. Kelly Myers is job sharing, actually, with one of our school counselors, who is on a partial leave for child rearing, and is joining us. And on the days that she's not going to be a school counselor, is going to work at some of our support centers that help students who need that extra level of support. And then Dave Elekna, I want to point out that at one of your last board meetings last year, he was doing... Part of his finishing is... And he sat right here, and I introduced him. And you all made the joke, "Well, make sure you sit close to Mr. Sullivan." He did. And we hired him as a part-time social studies teacher. So he is one of the theme that I will point out. It gives great pride to a former high school principal when he's able to sign his former students to a contract. And you come in and you give them a first-year teacher salary, and they're like grateful and so happy. And it's wonderful to see them succeed. At Henry James, we had two hires. Courtney Gallati, another one that most recently had been in Avon, and what the job at Henry James is teaching both PE and health. And Courtney really had that experience and rose to the top of the pool. The other extensive process that we ran for a math department supervisor resulted in the terrific hire of Melissa Luke, who really had great leadership examples from her interviews, real connection to people, most recently in East Hartford. But she's done an amazing amount of math leadership work at the state level, and we're really happy to have her here. Central School actually had quite a few hires. Moira Hunyatsky, most recently teaching at Anna Grace School, will be part of Grade IV. This was somebody that we interviewed a few years ago who didn't have any experience yet. She went out and got some experience, and we brought her back and hired her. So happy about that. Nancy Montemello will be teaching 2nd grade. This was a late hire in the summer. We're seeing a lot more teachers who come in with a... They want to be classroom teachers, but they also have a special education degree, and that's very useful. And we were pleased to see that with Nancy. And believe it or not, her mom used to work at Central School. So that's a little bit of a family connection. A special education hire, really, really very skilled hire, in Alice Chortle, you can see comes to us, most recently from another high-performing district in Brookline, Massachusetts. At Latimer Lane School, we brought... You will remember a budgeted position for a new social worker. This is actually shared with Tooten Hills School. Haley comes out of the Smith College Social Work Program, did some work in some other clinical settings, and is being welcomed with open arms to the Latimer and Tooten Hills communities in a shared assignment. And then Rebecca Wartshut is a very experienced educator from different parts of the country. She was a long-term sub for us at Latimer Lane last year, and every time I walked in that building, people said, "You need to hire her." So we did.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Squadron Line School had a number of hires. Here's my other former Simsbury High School student, Katie Farley, who's got a few years of experience in the Winchester Public Schools and has made her way back to Simsbury and will be teaching kindergarten... Has joined the kindergarten team. And she's fabulous. Already been by her classroom and enjoyed the... Sorry. Christina Garrity, the other budgeted position that you remember, is adding a math coach. Christina's experience is... She was a math coach in a high-performing district in Farmington, came to interview with us, and her implementation in Farmington was math in focus. So she was a perfect match for us. Really, we don't always succeed in more diverse hires, and yet we did this year with Juan Gonzalez, who's taught for the past five years in Hartford. He's worked with youth in a number of capacities over the course of a long career, and happy to have him joining our 5th grade team at Squadron Line. Ally Woodruff is my last of the Simsbury High grads who will be joining our team, graduated from Providence. Another one who had a special ed degree along with what she is a breath of fresh air in every way, I can tell you. It was wonderful to bring her back. This one is like the Energizer Bunny, Bridget Hogan. She is the one that is going to take Rich Keegan's position at Squadron Line and is just the kind of person that brings full joy and energy to the job and is going to be a total magnet for kids. And then the last one is Tisa Platt, who is going to take a part-time art teaching job, actually going to do a few days a week, a few days out of the cycle at Squadron Line, a few days at Tooten Hills, and a few days finishing her master's degree. So we welcome Tisa. So we were busy in human resources, and that's kind of a flavor of our successful hiring season.
Just another question. You had mentioned that we had success with a diversity appointment with Mr. Gonzalez, I think was his last name. I'm just wondering, what success did we have with applicants for these positions from minority groups?
It's... We struggle. It's... I mean, what I should probably do for you, Tom, is get a resource that I have about the statewide pool of minority teacher applicants. It's a statewide issue, and communities like Simsbury struggle with it even more. So it's not a huge pool that we get. And often, more teachers with a diverse background prefer to teach in communities that have a more diverse population. That's not always the case. Juan has been teaching at Hartford for five years and really felt like he just went off, got a master's degree, and felt like he was ready to bring his skills to another place and was thrilled to join Squadron Line. So we were fortunate, right place, right time, and the Squadron Line team really advocated to add him to the team.
That's wonderful. You mentioned that Simsbury struggles with diversity appointments, perhaps more than other districts. Could you just take a couple seconds and explain what that means?
I think it's a little bit to do with the fact that we aren't a very diverse place ourselves. And often, those teachers prefer to... You know, if they have a choice between teaching in West Hartford, which is a little more diverse than Simsbury, I've lost... When I was high school principal, I lost a number of teachers who had a choice to go to one of those two places. And, you know, I think it's a problem with the size of the pool of minority candidates that are out there as well. I think those are the two things.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have anything they want to ask? But none of them have gone running yet. They're all here and happy to be here.
They are all here.
Excellent. All's good. Moving on to the school opening report.
All right. I'm going to kick that off with the work around the Office of Teaching and Learning. Each summer, we spend a lot of time. It sounds like in the summertime, things should be slowed down and not much work. It seems to be the area that we spend a lot of time. So I want to review with you tonight some professional development, curriculum work, the work of our summer academies, our Simsbury Arts Academy, our Simsbury Technology Integration, and then give you a little bit of a preview of the work that we're working on in 2018, 19. So in regard to professional development, we have teachers in the summertime that always branch out and look for opportunities to continue to build their skill. We had two high school teachers that attended an advanced placement research course at Bridgewater State University in Bridgewater, Mass. We had one high school teacher attend the Core Project Lead the Way training in human body systems at Stevenson University in Maryland. We had five high school teachers that took courses at Taft Educational Center in Watertown, Connecticut, Advanced Placement European History, English Literature, U.S. Government and Politics, Physics, and Spanish. We had a 4th grade teacher and an elementary math coach that went up to Massachusetts and participated in a workshop with Dr. Yip Ben Har in regard to his national acclaim, international acclaim on Singapore math, math in focus. And they couldn't wait to call me and tell me about their experience. It was quite exciting for them. In regard to curriculum work, this is always an area that we have a lot of work going on. At the secondary level, we covered a lot of areas, English, math, science, social studies, art, family consumer science, technology, health, and PE. At the elementary level, we had units that were developed around bike safety, in art, reading, social studies, grammar, science, math, writing, music, and technology. We always, when teachers are designing and writing curriculum, we always have a design team that reviews their work. It's inclusive of myself, but we had four folks that came forward this year, Bill Antonidas, Melanie Mian, Georgia Austin, and Meg Craft, that reviewed all of the work that teachers completed to give them feedback. And then I follow up with department supervisors on that once we're back in school. In May, the district, I had the great opportunity to review a computer program through EduPlanet 21, which is an understanding-by-design platform framework that we can utilize to write curriculum into. We've used Google. We've used our own computer systems here. But this one is fascinating. We can put all of our standards into it. It aligns the standards with our assessments. It aligns standards with our instructional practices. I engaged about 50 people in it this summer to pilot it, and we see some great promise in this product. So we're really excited about that. And once we get more work done, I could share more with you on that. So in regard to our summer academies, we always provide a literacy and math academies, and we have enrichment academies for writing and mathematics. So as we look through this, we had 18 Simsbury Elementary teachers that participated, you know, instructing students in these academies this summer. We had nine high school students that intern. It's really a great opportunity for them to get experience in working in an educational field. And 154 students that participated in this. For math enrichment, there were 24 students that participated in that. Those are targeted students. Those are students that are looking to strengthen their problem-solving skills. And so it's really a great opportunity to engage them in this learning, using games and technology. The Summer Writing Academy, 45 students participated in that enrichment opportunity. And it's always a great... There's kids that just love to write, and we have such great writers in our district. So it's a great opportunity for them. And this past summer, our Simsbury Arts Academy, it offers a programming for students that are entering Grades 4 through 12. This year, we had 85 students that participated in this, and it culminated with a wonderful performance of Fiddler on the Roof at the end of July, I think it might have been, that was. We have our own faculty members that participate in this program. We had six college interns that helped out with this arts academy, high school alumni that come back and want to work in this program. So overall, it was just an incredible experience for our students.
Just two questions about that, please, Erin. One is, how... These are wonderful programs. How do we publicize the existence of these programs to parents in the community?
So it goes out in the springtime, early in the springtime.
Goes out with a mailing or email?
It goes through the email, the systems that our schools correspond with parents.
Mm-hmm.
Our literacy and math programs are very much for targeted students that need support in literacy and/or mathematics. So we get teacher recommendation as well, and we pursue that with parents. And the enrichment are really-- it's building. Parents see the opportunities to be able to have their students really explore more in the areas of writing and mathematics.
And the other question would be, are these-- these sound so terrific, and I'm really glad you're covering them. Are these programs growing in stature in our educational community or not?
Oh, I think every year, you know, it fluctuates. There's so many things that are offered for kids. It depends on their timing. We try to start some of our programming before the Fourth of July to get kids in, but they are opportunities for kids. I know that our Simsbury Arts Academy, last year we had about 100 students. We had 85. It really is all dependent on--
Thanks, so it fluctuates.
--you know, parents' schedules. But to have 85 students participate in an arts academy is pretty dynamic--
Yeah.
--as well as 154 kids in our literacy, math, and enrichment program.
Thank you very much.
So. So technology integration, we're always looking at technology. We can say we successfully implemented the one-to-one Chromebook use. We had a student help desk, which was called the Trojan Tech Team, and they provided technical and operational support to students throughout the school year. They were located in the library. In May, you know, our first year into this, we wanted to find out after distributing 1,400 Chromebooks, how well did they fare over the course of the year? And so John Cia-Latwinik, with a group of her folks, looked at every single Chromebook that was issued back in September to decide on how well it had fared over the course of the year. What we did find is there was a defect in the hinges of these, and they were all under warranty, and we were able to get them fixed. So what we decided to do is, once they did that review of all of the Chromebooks, the freshman, sophomore, and junior Chromebooks were sent home for the summertime, unless it needed extensive repair. The senior Chromebooks, and we had said we were going to do this, were taken, and those have replaced Chromebooks at the middle school. So about 350 of those Chromebooks went to the middle school. And just back at the-- just before the first day of school, we had a forms and photo day where 350 more Chromebooks were issued to ninth graders at Simsbury High School. So over the summertime, we've had Chromebooks, the Samsung. We've had them in district. We've talked about the fact that they sometimes-- they only have that six-year life, and so they're wearing out, and so there was some replacements with HP touchscreen Chromebooks. We've also done some replacement of the iPad 2s in our primary grades as well. We're really excited about the fact that our STEM lab at Simsbury High School got a second $10,000 gift that all of you saw come through last spring and through from Ensign Bigford Company and Dino Noble that provided that. And that was equipment that was used in the fabrication portion of the STEM lab. Our construction two students have been very involved in creating some walls and space to really partition some of that area off. So I really want to give them-- they're going to continue into the school year. They decided they weren't going to do a tremendous amount of work on the summertime, but in the school year, really use some of their time in school to continue the work in our STEM lab. So a lot of work that's going on there. A STEAM lab at Central School was also put together. These are other STEM opportunities. A robotics coding unit has been designed at the middle school. A first LEGO League is-- robotics team is going to be at Central School. And the expansion of the K.A. Makerspace Resources that has been in place for now a couple of years is really growing. So lots of technology stuff going on. In addition, we had our March Full Day Conference, Technology Conference, where our teachers provide professional learning opportunity for their colleagues across the district. Our Innovation Technology Team are-- those were the teachers that kicked off the day. They did a real presentation. They aligned what's called the SAMR, which is substitution-- I got to get this right-- substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition of technology. So, you know, you can simply substitute with technology, or you can really redefine learning with technology. And so they equated it to a swimming pool. So the deep end really being that redefinition of using technology, and the shallow end being the substitution. And that we always swim through the pool a lot of different ways, but they had flippers on. They were all dressed up.
They went with the theme.
They really did. Really did a nice job. And then our middle and high school students were located in the library with a lot of Makerspace types of things that teachers were able to go in and review. And I happened to stand with one of the physics teachers, who he was just enamored with what the kids were doing and wanted to do it with his physics class. And then in the afternoon, we gave the opportunity for teachers to come together with their colleagues and talk about their learning so they could share that. That's such a positive way in which to get them to think about what they're learning from other people in the district. So as we think about work coming forward, we are changing over from Outlook to Gmail, and I don't know all the details to that, but you'll hear more about it as time goes on. So that will happen by, I believe it is, August 2019. We are preparing for the one-to-one Chromebook distribution at Henry James, and that will be in effect by-- will have the whole plan in place by springtime and ready to go. And we are investigating, and I don't know a lot about this, but I did talk to John Cia about it as well, the possibility of a STEM Hackathon at Simsbury High School. And in talking with her about this, it's really including our technology engineering students, our computer science, physics, biomedical students, a variety of different students, where you come together, you identify a problem, you work through it, and it's all based with assistive technology opportunities as well. More to come on that, so I don't have a lot of detail, but it sounds like it will be a great day, and it would be held next spring, so.
Fundamentally, does that mean we're going to teach students how to hack?
No. No. No.
I'm reacting to the Hackathon idea.
No. And I-- that's-- we all laughed about that this morning, like, is that what it needs to be named? But I guess MIT has a similar program, and they're following. They've been in touch with MIT and the kind of work that they do there, that they're really looking to engage our high school students in that as well.
Thank you.
And finally, looking ahead, I just want to talk a little bit about the vision of the graduate. This year, we will spend our time auditing our learning opportunities that we have for students around the six competencies that we identified. Those six competencies of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, innovator, self-directed learner, and global citizen. And we will be talking more with you about that, but our goal this year is really to collect information of what do we currently do around this work in engaging kids in those six competencies. As we all know, this is our second year of Math in Focus. We have now our math coaches that are building-based, and they're really working through the student-centered coaching model and getting to build those relationships with teachers. The focus this year will definitely be on the pacing of our instruction as well as the assessments that we're doing around Math in Focus. We've talked a little bit about the NGSS, which are those National Science Standards, the New Generation Science Standards that have come and will be tested this year. We had a tremendous amount of work done this summer, curriculum work that was done. I was so impressed with what the high school did in regard to their ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade programs and redesigning their units to really build in the standards. And so these are being implemented as we speak, and will be implemented, piloted in different places in the grade levels at the elementary level throughout the year. We'll continue to focus on the achievement gap using our data teams to monitor student growth. We'll design instructional strategies based on the data that we collect in order to meet the needs and the learning of our diverse learners. We have had a very strong collaboration with our general ed and special education teachers, and Sue can certainly talk about that, but we'll continue engaging them in these conversations as well. We're always-- I'm a strong proponent for just-in-time professional learning for our teachers, and we'll continue to do this with the help of our language arts consultants, our instructional coaches, resource teachers, department supervisors, and the planned early release days that we have over the course of the year. And clearly, we'll continue to enrich and deepen our learning in our classrooms through the use of technology. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but it's work that I find really exciting, and I think it keeps us on the cutting edge of how we have to teach our students to prepare them for life as they move on through our K-12 program.
Thank you so much. That's really intense and wonderful. Anyone have any questions? That was great. Thank you so much, Erin.
So just a couple of topics from my office's opening of school report. Want to start after you hire all those new teachers. You don't just throw them to the wolves. You have to orient them to the district, and we do that really well, I think, and have a wonderful program that brings them in, really talks about the culture that we have here. We present a lot about your goals, our vision of the school district through a half-day session at the beginning. We bring in some people who just survived their first year of teaching at Simsbury, and really, we pick the ones that thrived so that they could share those stories and really put a positive face on what that first year is all about. We do an overview of several really important topics for new teachers. The educator evaluation system, of course, how they're going to set their goals along with their colleagues. But also, they get a half-day overview of their curriculum. There's an overview of what the K-12 curriculum is, but then they work with someone on their grade level or their team for a little while to make sure they're oriented. And then they also get an orientation from Sue and Nancy about special education in the school district for about two hours of a nice overview of special education. Those who are new to the profession work with Jan Sands for a whole morning on what's going to be expected to them to meet the team program that we presented about to the board last year. And we always get the best feedback about our bus tour. I want to thank J.R. Salter this year, who sent over the air-conditioned bus.
Air-conditioned.
And as a result, for the first time in the popular four-year history of the bus tour, we got the superintendent on the bus.
I had heard so many things about our--
No coincidence.
--our guide that I had to see it for myself. I'd like to go on it next year. It's worth the ride.
Welcome to do it. It's great.
Wouldn't that be great to go on?
Tara would probably have the most history. She tops me, and I'm pretty good, so I-- we could invite her as a guide. So student enrollment, what you're seeing here is really opening at weekend to opening-- there's a piece of that that didn't come on up there. This is really-- we do the official report on October 1st, of course, as you know, but this is where we were after the first weekend of school. And you will see that the overall number-- the part that didn't come out there-- overall number is 4,015. We were projected at 3,996. So above projections, and I'll show that on the next slide exactly. So NESDEC was close with the projections, but we are definitely going to be over when we hit the October 1 report. I want to really point out that K-6, it's a slight increase in K-6. When we get there, 1982 was our count on first weekend, and it will be around that when we hit October 1st. It will be the first time that elementary enrollment went up instead of down in Simsbury since 2002-03.
Thank goodness.
So that's a pretty significant number. Middle school downs pretty significantly, but as projected. We knew the middle school was going to be going down, and the high school actually up slightly. So by the time you-- we are exactly between those places. Our projection was to be-- I'll show it this way. Our projection, we are 19 over the projections. At 3,996 was the projection. We're at 4,015. But kindergarten enrollment itself was 30 above the projection. So you're going to see the impact that that had on kindergarten. But we are down 24 from what the October 1 number was last year. So as a result of that 30 over the projection at kindergarten, over the course of the spring and summer, we did add three full teachers in. I think I talked about the ones at Squadron and Tooten Hills in the spring, but we also had to add to Central School over the course of the summer, and I'll highlight that on the chart slide that we're about to show. And then just something I haven't figured out yet, I'm going to be looking at it a little more closely. We just had more move-ins at the high school level. We always know that there's a certain population that on the eighth to ninth grade transition is going to choose some private school options, but we had people moving in from different towns in Connecticut, different places. So that number that you saw the high school a little bit above was move-ins, mostly in August, that we saw.
Are they from the new apartment buildings that are--
I can't pinpoint at that directly yet. I'm going to look a little closer at it, but yeah, it's-- I don't think it's directly the apartments, but I have to take some time to look at exactly where they're-- what their addresses are. So--
Who'd they help?
Oh.
Thanks.
You're moving.
One of those new students. Thank you very much for sharing.
At the high school level?
We have a junior at Simsbury High School--
Great.
--in the 10th grade or 5th grade at Latimer.
Welcome.
Yeah. Neil, on the move-ins to the high school, is there a disproportionate number of special education or special needs kids moving in or no?
I don't think I would know the answer to that.
We're crunching those numbers. There was quite a number of students with IEPs that move in, and we're looking at that versus move-outs and as a percentage of the entire population. So I can update the board with that as we settle in and get all of that paperwork and those numbers together for you, Tom.
So one more look at the elementary class size, and I'll highlight what you see. The big red blocks are those kindergarten classes that we added. So you could see at Central School, if we had run only the two classes that we had projected, you would have had very large kindergartens that you were dealing with. Squadron Line, 72 students. If we had only run three of those, you would have had 24 in every kindergarten class. And Tooten Hills was not even close. We were projecting two classrooms, and it's well over 50 students that we ended up getting. So that decision was made very early in the spring, that there is no way we're going to get away with two kindergartens at that. But that, as we went through the budget process, that's what we had budgeted. The other place that I will highlight is, if you look at the middle Squadron Line column and second grade, the only classrooms that, as we start the year, that are one student each above class-size guidelines are Squadron Line, second grade. So I'll remind you that the K-2 guideline says up to 22 students, and so we're running those at 22, 23, 23, 23. All others are at or below guidelines. To show you what that looked like last year, when we were in-- to say budget uncertainty would be an understatement. We-- I mean, we did not know whether we had a budget crisis at the state level on our hands, and at that time, we did not add any extra classrooms, and as a result, we were at an uncharacteristic 10 classes at this time that exceeded the range. What this chart is meant to show you, only when I highlighted this last year, only one other time had we been at that many over guidelines. We had been more used to there being two or three, and we're kind of back to where we've been. So wanted to make sure the board saw that.
And I remember the conversation last year when the board questioned what the meaning of over guidelines is, and I think Mike raised that point. Is it fair to say that whenever we're talking about exceeding guidelines, we're talking about maybe one stu--
Right.
Yeah.
Some of those in the 10 last year, some of those 10 were two above guidelines, but not many. If you had run the Squadron Line kindergartens at 24 each, you would have started the year two above guidelines in every kindergarten. And trust me, kindergarten's not a grade you want to be above guidelines, so.
I imagine.
And that's coming from a high school guy. You do not want to be--
I was going to say, there's a bit of a transformation.
Working on it. Working on it.
And just to look ahead in 2018-19 for my office, we've already really dove into number one. We highlighted during the budget process last year that we were going to start to phase out of kind of an old-fashioned substitute caller program. We dove in with two feet, and we implemented an automated system that we trained all of our teachers, our substitutes, our paraprofessionals, and have spent the first few weeks working out the glitches of that system. Kudos to Cindy Frelinger for a tremendous amount of work to put in a system that, quite frankly, was overdue. We were running something that time had kind of passed by in terms of what was available out there in terms of technology. But it was a big lift to get us to where we were. My office will be responding to that enrollment information. On October 1st, I will have the latest of the new development document that I-- On October 1st, I will have the latest of the new development document that I've been giving you over time. Cambridge Crossing up by the skating center is going up fast, and the Hartford property is, when you drive by on Route 10, you can see is, what I am hearing on that one is occupancy by next fall. So, that one could be interesting. Aspen Green is also filling quickly. So, that's the one right on Route 10 at the border with Avon. So, of course, safety and security, I pointed out our book to start the meeting, but we'll be following up on our consultant's recommendations. We have received the report now from Henry James and Latimer Lane, which was the two that we did at the very end of last year. And I have booked the consultant to finish all seven schools. He'll be here in November to do an assessment of Central, Tooton, and Terrifield. So, we will have had his eyes on all seven schools. We are advancing the kind of training and emergency simulations that we are doing in conjunction with the town emergency officials. And we're doing some work, Sue and I were able to take a drive down to New Town, to an organization this summer, the Sandy Hook Promise, which provides free resources, they're well-grant-funded and providing free resources to schools, a lot around school culture, but a lot around mental health tools and resources. So, enthusiastic about what we saw during that visit. On the negotiations front, as I look to the people on that committee, it will just be the custodians this year. We'll start that in the winter. But come spring and summer next year is the ramp-up for our largest contract, which is the teacher's contract, and in conjunction with that, we do the administrator's contract. So, it'll be, this time next year, we will be in negotiations with those groups already because that timeline is advanced. And then, while I love my multifaceted job, at the heart of it, it's a human resources job. And so, I thought I would talk about a resource that we use with, a professional development text that we use, it's called Playmakers, and it is what great principals do to build and lead teams. And we digest this text with our principals, and it's got three buckets of things that great principals do, is that they manage talent, they create great places to work, and they build professional learning, create professional learning opportunities. At the core of the job, that's what it is. And I love the managing talent part of it, and that's what, so you saw all those teacher slides, but managing that talent around our paraprofessionals and our secretaries and our custodians. And at the heart of my work, that is something that is very gratifying and rewarding.
Does anyone have any questions for Neil?
Can I just ask you a quick question? The big moment for me on the enrollment slide was actually the middle school and that drop. Can you just give me the 30 seconds like what?
Yeah, we had anticipated it, and what it is, is just a larger 8th grade class going to 9th, and a much smaller 6th grade class going into 7th. So, it had nothing to do with the ins and outs, it was just size of cohorts moving.
Thank you very much.
Terrific. So, it wasn't long after the last diploma was awarded that we began our work in extended school year services this summer. We had 175 students from our little bugs that are three and four-year-olds to our young adults who are in our 18 through 21 program at the Farmington Valley Transitional Academy, participating in extended school year. So, we work on a variety of skills. They can be academic, behavioral, vocational, social-emotional, and we have sites all over the Farmington Valley community, certainly some here at our different schools and campuses, and some at FETA, some at different camps. We have students who participate in recreational camps and who work on their IEP goals and objectives. So, it's pretty dynamic. Major kudos to Christina Norrell, she's a middle school teacher in her second year as ESY Coordinator, and just does a phenomenal job making sure that our students who have very intense needs or students who might be prone to regression based upon their disability have that continuity in service throughout the school year and into the summer months. We had two great professional development sessions. I say this because I facilitated them, I don't know if everybody else will think they're so great, but the first was with the Certified Faculty. On that first day, coming back, and we had some opportunity to do some team building. But special education is hard work, and you're working with students who have some of the potentially the largest gaps that you're working with. So, I really had our staff focus on, why do you do what you do? Many of you have certifications in other areas too, but why special ed? So, when that work becomes exceptionally difficult, how do we come back to our why and our purpose? And how does that feed into the mission of our department so that it is alive and well in what we do within for kids here in Simsbury? We also had the opportunity to look at some data, so I'll be mentioning that relative to our achievement gap. And there's always some business items and usually some legal updates that I have to give staff. So, that was part of the Certified Faculty session number one. And the board will remember that this is our fourth year now bringing paraeducators back before the students come back, the day before, actually. And this is a great time for paraeducators to participate in professional development themselves. We looked at best practices in our work, what works, and quite frankly, what isn't as effective, and how does the work of the paraeducator really support our mission to make sure that our students with special needs are as independent and successful as possible. So, that was great, and they had the opportunity to pair up with their general education and special education colleagues, look at those last-minute changes to IEPs, and get ready to greet our students at the door the following morning. So, two great professional development sessions. The board, these themes should come, to no surprise to the board, these are our big four that we've been looking at in special education. First of all, looking at the achievement gap. So, certainly, we'll delve into our Sback and SAT data a little bit more at another presentation that we'll do. But really happy with our cohort performances specifically in special ed, where every cohort in grades 3 through 8 grew cohort-to-cohort, apples-to-apples data. So, we're closing that gap bit by bit. I do credit a lot of the collaborative work that we've done, certainly with our general education teachers. You know, we got it right as far as the professional development goes, in that our special education teachers are working hand-in-hand with our gen ed teachers, learning with them, building their own capacity, and what that means for all of our students, but specifically those identified with special needs. Mental health supports, Neil mentioned a little bit about the Sandy Hook Promise, but two major points of emphasis here. The first is that some of our general education teachers were sharing some of their concerns around the uptick in more difficult behaviors that they were facing. And so, last year, at the end of the year, we administered a survey to our general education and special education teachers. Over 200 of our educators responded to that survey. In the summer, we were really able to take a look by school and by district, what were the major themes that were coming from that. The two biggies, quite frankly, were anxiety of our students, didn't matter upon age or building, as well as executive functioning. So, that term is thrown out a lot. It really is in three buckets. One is around impulse control, how do students manage that? The second is around the flexibility in thought. So, when you're asked one cognitive demand and you have to transition to the other, how do our students do that? Organization is a huge part of executive function. And the third is working memory, which was also, it's synonymous to that short-term working memory. How do students hold on to information long enough to use it? So, we are going to be working by building on the very specific themes that came out of those surveys. Had some great conversations with principals, are folding in some of our special ed expertise. And our two professional development days, the first one being in November, a good chunk of that full day is going to be designated to address the concerns that the teachers shared that they would like some more support with. So, I have a nationally-known speaker, her name is Lynn Lyons. She's the author of Anxious Child, Anxious Parent. If you haven't read it, it's a phenomenal read. She's actually going to be doing a parent program the night of November 5th before the professional development, so I'll be advertising that. But she'll also be our keynote speaker, and she understands that we're talking pre-K through our teachers who work with students to age 21, and she will really be able to give some teachers some strategies that I think that they could use the very next day. Also, really interesting development is, we formed a district team of two school psychologists, two social workers, and myself, and we're calling it our STAT team. And the STAT team is going to really be able to do student threat assessment and risk assessments, where our students might not be showing the more easy-to-define behaviors around risk assessment, but they're going to be going deep into their own professional development and being a district resource to both our general and special educators. So, we're really excited about that work. And certainly, we're going to be continuing our efforts around dyslexia, again, building capacity about what the current research says, the best way to address the multifacetedness of dyslexia, as well as transition. Those little transitions between school or between grade level with the ultimate goal of coming back to our mission and providing that independence so our students with disabilities who have IEPs can attend their four-year colleges or go into work and do so independently. And what do those transition services look like for us here in Simsbury, and being really transparent with our families about that? Finally, additional considerations, we're always looking at how we deliver specially-designed instruction that is at the core of our mission statement. How do we do that most effectively and most efficiently? So, working with principals, our teachers, our families, to really make sure that we have some consistent practices in how we identify students and how we deliver that specially-designed instruction. And then finally, as the board knows, special education comes with cost, and there are some major cost centers within special education. One that I think we've worked very hard over the past couple of years with our outplacements to try to make some projections and determinations to make that a more predictable cost center. And again, this next one is transportation, and putting our heads around that and what that looks like relative to special ed. So, certainly, the board will be receiving updates from me as that work unfolds this year.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Sue? Sounds like a lot of great progress.
Excited.
Thank you very much for everything.
The highlight. Tone it down here this year.
It is. Now it comes to the pictures, and it's the best part.
You could have thrown pictures.
It's true. I should.
Yeah, she could, she could as well. So, in our business office report for school opening, while the PowerPoint focuses more on the buildings and getting them ready, we always start off with the fact that, you know, we start a new fiscal year, but we're still in the old year because we have to do the state reporting and then get ready for the auditors who are coming later this fall. So, I have to give credit to Kira Sheehan, who's our Board of Ed accountant and budget analyst, for all that she does to make that happen. And also, this year, the state switched to a new state financial reporting system, so it used to be known as the EDO-01, now it's the EFS, same timeframe, basically due at the start of September. So, that was successful this year, and we're glad to have that figured out, and it'll probably get a little bit easier as we're used to the new system. Highlighted in the board's packet that the fiscal 2017-18 operating budget has an unaudited public school budget surplus of $25,697, and the non-public school budget had an operating surplus of $9,884. So, with those financial highlights, also wanted to mention that before school starts, every year, we have our fire mar, Simsbury Fire Marshal's office comes around with our supervisor of buildings and grounds and tours all seven schools and makes sure that those are ready to be opened, and all items have been taken care of before the start of the school year. And this year, what I tried to capture in some of the pictures was, this was more than probably almost every other year that I can think of in total, we just had a lot more projects that were unique where we had to go out to bid. We just didn't have things that we could purchase off of a state bid, or they were just of a unique nature. So, I kind of captured some of those here. We were finishing up, the tennis court project was out many, many times. It was great to see the, in fact, this past weekend, they did the windscreen, which was the last step that we were waiting for there. We completed at the beginning of the summer, the AC in both the cafeteria and the gold gym. This is a picture actually of the rooftop, one of the rooftop units, and that's what looks like in the cafeteria. You don't really notice it, but I know that it's been helpful for students this year, having one place within that building that they can cool down. The gym floor needed refinishing in our main gym, and it looks excellent, so we're glad to have that done for another 10 years or so. And throughout other school buildings, we had lots of maintenance improvement projects. This is one that happens to be Latimer Lane, where there's a new door that will help with the flow of traffic. It's just little things like that that I know principals are excited about because it really makes a benefit to their operation. A number of schools had carpeting and flooring replacements. This happened to be the main office at Central, some new carpeting and flooring in portions of our high school library. We have a sort of first phase, there'll be a second phase next summer that's planned. First of, a number of phone systems that need to be replaced, this was Central School, happened to be the oldest, and we were able to replace the intercom at the same time, so worked closely with Jason Casey, our Director of Systems Tech, on this bid process, and now we feel like we have a good handle on how to do the next couple of schools, and worked a lot with Jeff Penny on some of those projects. Most recently, we replaced the scoreboard at the Holden Field, and that was one of those ones that had to go out to bid also. So, just want to wrap up with thanking Steve Twitchell, who's our supervisor of buildings and grounds, for the amazing number of projects that he has to juggle, all of our senior custodians and their staff in each of our schools, our district-wide maintenance staff, which does a lot of projects in all of our schools. And this past summer, Steve Twitchell and Neil and I had a lot of regular meetings about security projects, so I have not highlighted those here visually, but we continue to work on that capital project that was funded this past year, along with, of course, the Henry James Project. And so, looking ahead, one of our other projects was the, that was funded in the capital plan this year, was the facilities master plan and reconfiguration study that we're going to talk about next on your agenda. So, I will still be working with Public Building on the Henry James Project for about 18 months, once that starts, so really about two years roughly in total from design to construction. As I mentioned, there's still school security improvements, and not to lose sight, we also did have funding for the replacement of Latimer Lane's boiler, so we've got to get the engineering process and design started there, and then, you know, working with you all on the development of the next six-year CIP and certainly master planning. So, that is what we've got to look forward to.
Anyone have any questions? I want to just thank you very much for putting in that slide on the thank you to that, our building committee, they, Steve Twitchell and our custodians, and you and Burke and Neil, you do so much work that no one knows about. So, it's just really important that, you know, you understand, we really appreciate all the work you're doing, and, you know, on Convocation Day, I got there, and Steve was parked next to me, and he got up and picked up a water bottle that was against the fence. I mean, he's so proud of our facilities, and he feels like they're his extended home, so thanking them is really important. Thank you for putting that on the slide, in our presentation.
And there was one slide that I really should have had there. I know that I was at Henry James one day to see the pickleball lines that were at. It was a rainy day.
We're very proud of our pickleball.
I should have taken a picture of it, but we did have that done over the summer. I know that's gotten some use on it.
I had to remind him with a little sticky note. Don't forget pickleball. The gym teachers at Henry James are planning on putting it in the curriculum for next year. That's great, I know. Which will be very fun. It'll be great. Anyone have any other questions? Thank you very much. Now, we're back to you, Burke, I think.
And we have a couple more slides. Tara, about what we just heard, I just want to compliment this group over here because clearly, what you all have presented tonight is a tremendous amount of work, and I just want to affirm the quality and the quantity of that work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we just have two more slides to go over, really just trying to give an overview method. Matt, did you want to intro or?
You can go ahead with Burke. I thought it was important early on in the year here, though, to bring some of these major topics back in the busyness of the budget season with the excitement around the large Henry James Project. That's where a lot of, I think, our public conversations and thought were. In that capital plan, we also got $200,000 approved for a longer range study. And that study has two pieces. And I wanted Burke to talk through that a little bit tonight because we recently put this out to bid, and he'll talk through that process a little bit. And that'll be a focus of, I think, a lot of our conversations as we work through the year and very helpful to us as we plan the future arc of what we're going to do with our facilities.
So as Matt said, this was part of our capital plan. The town also has a separate project for a facility study, for town building, so we kind of have that in common. And so the first three bullets here that I've highlighted, really just taking that detailed review of all of our buildings, trying to get a sense of maintenance needs, priorities, and costs to drive our capital plan. That is something very similar, and we'll work to what the town's doing. The fourth bullet is the additional thing that's unique, which is looking at the potential for alternate grade configurations and looking at our enrollment changes and how that all ties together. So there's sort of a team approach needed to this project. So with that funding, we issued a request for proposals just last week, and we've already received about 14 interested requests for the package. So that seems promising. Those proposals will be in and due the end of the month, and then we'll start the process of selection, interviews of firms. The goal is to have them onboard in mid-November with a contract. And we have into the scope that they would kind of give a sort of a check-in to the board by March 30th, just on progress. And then we would estimate that it would take roughly one year to do all of the work involved with completion in December 18. So if there's any questions for Matt or I, I'd be happy to.
Only one quick one. We had some conversation at the board level last year about the possibility of revising the configuration of the middle school to make it a three-year school instead of two. Is this program that you've just described, and this is for the benefit of the public as well as the board, is this program that you've described going to speak to that issue?
We'll take a look at that configuration and also with updated projections. You know, that question of if a scenario like that is reviewed with current projections and build out in the town, what does that do to what your K5 population would look like spread across your elementary school? So we'll address that.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Very comprehensive. Our next order of business is our committee assignments. And I think just from the public that's here, as we sit on the Board of Education, but we also, many of us sit on one or two auxiliary boards to do some of the smaller work in smaller groups. We have a policy board, a personnel and negotiations board, a curriculum board, and a communications board. And so we have, we assign them, we are all, I think we have no new members, so I think I put it out to everyone. And I think I just wanted to make sure that we all are onboard. We've all assigned, everyone's assigned to new committees going forward for the following year. But that's just something that we do every year, so we're doing it tonight. Everyone's okay with their committees?
Good.
Excellent. Moving on to public audience again, anyone have anything to say now? You picked a good night. You learned a lot about a lot of stuff. It was a very comprehensive evening of all of the hard work that they do and how the summer isn't, not everybody goes on summer vacation like the kids do. So on that note, oh, sure, absolutely. And what's your name?
Jennifer. I'm Jennifer. Can you explain to us, since we're new residents of Simsbury and we don't know your system, what the town's CIP process is? Is that something that the Board of Education handles directly with the?
I'm going to turn this over to my friend Burke.
Sure. So we use too many acronyms.
Acronyms. That is one of the biggest problems. I'm sorry about that.
There's another CIP acronym that's used within the district. So in this regard, it is, we are part of the overall town capital improvement plan and six-year planning process. So the Board of Education takes a vote by the middle of February, and then it gets, their plan gets submitted to the Board of Selectment as part of an overall plan. And then it gets moved on to voters after a review by the Board of Plan.
Do you foresee that we'll be going up again for more funds for the additional renovations that need to be completed? I know specifically at Latimer, we have phase one of air conditioning completed, but then for the older grades, and I know there's issues at other schools as well. I don't know entirely what those are, but would that go back in February to say maybe we might need a little bit more?
That's part of our planning process, right? We would look at what is remaining from the existing fund and see what else might need to be appropriated going forward.
Jennifer, can I have your address just for a minute, please?
Yes. 126 Hot Meadow Street, 9B, Weetog.
Perfect. You got it. Excellent. Excellent job. You're so welcome. Anyone else? All right. With that, I would recommend, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to a chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting is September 25th.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.